Okay, so I'm gonna call the meeting to order at 7:46. Uh, let's see, do we have any public comment? Anybody waiting to say anything, Bill? None? Okay. Then we can move on to the... Do you guys want me to put the agenda up, or do you guys have it in front of you?
I have it.
I have a copy.
Okay. So the first thing is approval of the October minutes, which I sent out. Again, I can pull them up if you'd like.
No, I'll make a motion to accept.
Okay, so that's Vince. Can I get a second? Amy, thank you. Any discussion or corrections? Okay, then, all those in favor of approving the October minutes, raise your hand as an "I." Okay, that's unanimous. I don't know what's happening outside my window. Hold on. Oh my God. Oh, it's not my guys. Oh, it is. Great. It's my maintenance team, trimming. Okay, um, let's see, the commission makeup. So, uh, we're still looking for another member. Vince, you gave me the name of Ed Gillespie, and I completely dropped the ball on that. Do you want to talk to him?
Sure, if I see him tomorrow morning at the Rotary Meeting, I'll mention it.
Yeah, and tell him, because I'm pretty sure I know him, like...
You probably do.
Has he worked for us before?
Uh, for our commission? Not that I'm aware of.
Let me just... Let me just look at one thing. Let me just look at my list of, uh... I just don't, I just can't figure out why his name is so familiar to me. All right, in any event, um...
Yeah, I'll be chuckle.
Yeah, and describe what we're talking about. You know, it's these early morning meetings. They're every six weeks. Um, we need somebody with, you know, some technical, more technical knowledge if possible. Um, and if he's interested, then let me know, and I'll talk to him, and then I'll get him to Town Hall to, you know, do whatever has to do.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody have any other thoughts? Oh, and we gotta check his, his political, uh, because we cannot have another Republican.
Okay, I don't think he's a Republican. I think he's Democrat, but I'm not 100% sure.
Unaffiliated or Democratic?
Yeah.
We've got... Okay, so Vince, talk to... Okay. All right, then Laura, your turn. Nice. Did you get your haircut? It looks very nice.
Oh, thank you. I washed it this morning.
Oh, that must be it. And blow-dried it.
Yeah, that's amazing what a blow-drier does.
So how are we doing on, on the team?
We're doing well. Matt started up yesterday. Ryan is still helping out as videographer, so that is still much appreciated. Still got Ryan and Rainey, so they've been helping out a lot. It has been, um, holiday concert mayhem, to put it nicely. Monday, for the first time in, I can't remember how long, we had four events happening on the same night.
Really? Don't they coordinate schedules?
There were three concerts and one government meeting.
Oh my gosh.
You know, and I think a lot of it has to do with, you know, the school's availability, and then it trickles down to who's, what school is it, and where do they need to be too, because I know, like, Tashua did their concert at Madison, so it's a matter of who's got space and who's available. So I'm sure it's like, you know, like Jenga kind of coordinated all of that. And, um, I, yeah, I had Gary Kunchef, the Daniels Farm principal, pinch-hit for us recording, so mad props to him. So, uh, yeah, we, it was a little, little, you know, because again, why would anything ever, and then I made the dumb mistake of, you know, telling my son, "Oh, I'll pick you up on Monday," so instead of recording, I was out of town. So anyway. Um, but that's the whole concert spiel, but we're almost done this, after this week, after tonight, actually. I know Ryan's got one tonight, I think, and I have, I'm doing Hillcrest. Um, I think there's maybe one or two more next week, so that's almost done. Um, the really great thing is that Nick DeDonna brought in his two video production classes to come tour the studio. It was about a month ago, and four students came and approached me with interest in becoming a videographer. And one of them very bravely stepped up and recorded one of the concerts, and she did a great job. So, and she's a sophomore, so yay.
So we need to get her paperwork in, or unless she's doing it?
Yeah, I told her she needs to get her paperwork in, so she can get paid for her work. Um, and then when I was picking up the camera at Daniels Farm on Tuesday, the secretary was asking, you know, "Are you hiring people? My son is in video," I said, you know, "So, um, she's gonna give me his information about videography as well." So I kind of warned her. She's like, "He's got his masters," I said, "I'm warning him, it's not, you know, this is, as Ryan knows, this is not the sexiest job as far as what you get to record," but she's like, "It's money, he'll be employed." I said, you know, I gave him my contact information, so I'm just waiting to hear from him. So I don't think he'll need a whole ton of ramp-up time. And she's like, "I'll have him send you a resume," I'm like, "Nope, just tell him to call me." We're good. Um, so that's where we are with videographers. So we're slowly but surely, you know, clawing back to having some more students and, you know, I think it's, I think it's just tough for them, because a lot of them are active in school sports and doing other activities, and they're interested, but it's just a matter of, you know, their bandwidth, because they're students. But I did, I said to them, you know, my, I, I did say when I met with them, "This is not supposed to be stressful. I will give you the schedule. If you can't make anything, that's okay. You know, school comes first, and I'll just keep giving you schedules." And, you know, this is not supposed to be something that they stress about. I don't want them freaking out about, like, one of them couldn't make, I was, you know, I had a little meeting after school, and one was like, "I have practice for tra-" That's fine, we'll figure it out. So I'm just trying to, you know, keep them interested, keep them involved, and at the same time, you know, they don't need to be stressed over what, whether they can make a meeting or not. They're high school students. So that's recruiting, that's the recruiting bit. Um, as far as THS Sports, we had a great run. We broadcast, we'll be livestreamed all of the home football game.
Hold on, we're not doing programming yet. We gotta do financials first, so jump ahead.
Okay, so that was, that's the budget status as far as videographers. So we are, like I said, we're just trying to build up that cadre.
Okay, so, uh, let's talk... Let's move on to finance.
Okay.
Um, just... Give me one second here to... I'm gonna pull this spreadsheet up so you guys can see it. Um, so our current budget, we are, uh, where's my... Do I have sharing? Oh, there it is, Share School. All right. Okay, so can you see?
Yes.
Okay, so this is the summary of where we are. Um, so we've got videographers, supervising producer, which is, uh, Laura and, and Ryan, or Matt, whoever, office supplies, programming supplies, public relations, travel. So we are in great shape for our budget, which we usually are. I'm trying to see, yep. So I don't, you know, unless you guys have specific questions about specific situations, but our budget is in good shape. We are about to enter, um, the 2023-24 budget season. Remember, we go from July 1st to June 30th, so we're almost halfway through our fiscal year, um, which is so crazy what we have to start doing now, which is giving a snapshot, you know, where are we on our goals, and setting new goals and objectives for next year, which doesn't start till July. Um, so Laura and I have worked on that. Let me pull that up to show you what I'm gonna, what I need to send over to, uh, hold on. To, um, Town Hall. I will share that now. No, cancel. I don't want to do that. I want to share. So first, we have to recap where we are on this year's goals, even though we're only halfway through the year. So I don't know if we want to go into, you know, agonizing detail here, but the, the point is not for us to be 100% done on these things, and then to make a list of the goals and objectives for next year, which are typically, for us at least, extensions of stuff we've done in the past. The one thing that does flip off and on is what, the extent of our election programming. So this year, because there were not local elections, we didn't do an election night. We did have Katie Boland at the high school, her Be the People team, do some really nice PSAs about why you should vote and how to vote, and explaining, you know, some of the specific races that were happening this year. I, I think that's a tradition. We should continue to do those, um, those little, what were they, minute or two long, Laura?
I agree. Some, they had some 30, 30 to 60-second PSAs that we put on social media, and then I ran, um, on the channel between programming. And then they also did some in-studio pieces on the different elected offices at the state level, and they described, uh, you know, and we kind of, you know, Kate, Kate and I handed it over to Katie Boland and her students, and Katie Boland kind of gave it to the students to run however they wanted. So they each were given an office, governor, lieutenant governor, attorney general, all those state offices, and they would present, you know, they basically had to describe what the responsibilities of that office was, and, um, who the candidates were. So some of them did, you know, more traditional newscasts, some of them set it up almost like a Jeopardy show, but it was all their decision on how they want to do that. So, um, I agree with Kate. I think we should continue to do that, and Katie Boland has been really a fantastic sport about working with us and supporting us, so.
So I tried to send you guys this document, and I don't know what it is about, the way that it's formatted, but it's gigantic. Um, so I'm gonna try again after this meeting, because I, I don't, I'm not sure that it's, um, worth our time to go through every single one of these goals today, but I, you guys do need to see them and, you know, get back to me with any comments. So I'm going to try again to send it out to you. Um, and again, one side is current year, that is the left side, and then what we're talking about doing starting in July, which again, is typically a continuation of what we've been doing this year. Does that all make sense? Okay.
You, you could save it as a PDF and share that. I think that's gonna be a...
Oh, that's a good idea.
The size is a bit, uh, an issue.
I think it's, I think it's a lot of the formatting or something. I, I have never had trouble sharing it before. I'm not sure why, but yeah, I, let me do that. I'll, I'll share it as a PDF, and then if you guys can just scribble notes on it, and then scan it and send it back to me, or email me, or whatever. That's a good idea, Jens. Thank you. The other thing is that, um, I'm gonna stop sharing. The, the budget cycle starts, right? So we need to start to pull our budget together for next year. Um, I'm slated to present to Vicki, uh, February 3rd, and we have a meeting on January 26th, so my plan is to, um, you know, have the budget ready for you guys to approve at that meeting. Certainly, you know, any input you want to have, our budget tends to say the sa- stay the same from year to year, more or less, um, with the exception of capital requests. So we need to think about, you know, I think we've, we've completed most of our big capital, um, purchases in the last cup, couple of years, and it feels like we're in pretty good shape, but this is where, you know, anything, cameras, anything that's gonna be thousands of dollars, we need to get, we need to get on the list so that we can get it approved.
Kate, I do think we should consider replacing some of the cameras. I know that there's one camera in particular in the studio that, I don't know if it's one of the settings or not, but this has been, it's been an issue before where its autofocus is not the greatest, and it's one of the older cameras.
Okay, so you need to run some numbers and, you know, figure out if it's one or two that you need. This is our one shot, right?
Yeah, um, I would, yeah. And, and like I said, I know that we're still using some of the older cameras, um, for videography shoots, which is not a problem. They're just heavier, and I did look at trying to replace them. Um, I'll have to, I'll look a little more, because the one that I found on B&amp;H, which is similar to the newer ones that were purchased a couple of years ago, don't have XLR inputs for audio, which is weird. So I don't want to have to, like, you know, buy a whole bunch of converters or whatever as well, so.
That's a good point. They have XLRs. I wouldn't say a must, but it's certainly something that worth having.
Well, because so much of what we do, you, all the shotgun mics we have are XLR. If we use, um, lav mics, those are all XLR, so I want to make sure that we're not, you know, causing other problems by solving one, so.
So I would make your wish list, right? Right? Let's get it on here, and make, make the argument for, because we should be replaced, you know, as technology does improve, and be on some sort of a cycle for, for replacing, um, cameras and any other major equipment.
Yeah, I have no idea how old those studios' cameras are. Ryan probably would have a better idea. He may have been using them when he was in high school. I don't know.
Uh, yeah. Um, I've, I've actually been looking into picking up a, a camera, um, for myself and, and Rainey personally, so I can send you the link to the one that we're looking at. It's pretty comparable to, um, what is currently being used, the, the newer models.
Great, yeah, that would be great. Thank you. Because again, you know, like I said, I was looking at, I was thinking about that as well. We have all Panasonic's, and again, it becomes an issue of, you know, how many batteries do we need, what kind of adapters and things, and I'm just trying to keep the costs as contained as possible.
So how much is the camera like that? Not, not, how much does a studio camera go for, and how much does a videographer, you know, mobile camera go for?
Well, the, the cameras that we use, uh, I know the two Panasonic's that were bought most recently were about 1,200, 1,300 each. Um, I, there's one on B&amp;H that's a Panasonic, that's about 1,600, but that doesn't have the XLR input. And Ryan, I think what you were looking at was around, what, like 15, 16?
Yeah, around there.
And what's in the studio are the, is the same, you know, those cameras are just on tripods, so those could be, you know, like, whatever we purchased could be multipurpose.
Okay. All right, so just figure out how many you need and, and make sure you have a model so we can...
Yeah.
You know, I mean, if we, you know, budget $5,000 or $6,000, I, I don't think I'm gonna have a lot of trouble getting that through.
Okay, that would be great. Thank you.
And, and at least, you know, replace what's in this, you know, pick up three.
Yeah.
But again, look at what you've got. This is the time to ask. They might cut it back, but I want to, I want to go for everything that we, that we need.
Yeah, because the two newer cameras that we, you know, and newer, they were bought, Sean bought them, but they're still, they're in great shape. You know, the cameras that we have work, it's just a matter of, like, you know, that one studio camera is kind of wonky as far as the focus, and if we could get some newer ones, you know, maybe then, who knows, maybe the older ones.
Well, yeah, I think we ask, right? Even if it's $10,000, I think we ask.
We ask for a pony.
Yeah, we ask for a pony. Um, okay, good. So any other questions on the budget? I think you guys, uh, have a copy of the, of the spreadsheet. Do you, would, do you want me to send it out again so you can see what our spending is? And if you have any specific recommendations? Amy, I'm thinking specifically about any marketing, you know, we don't budget a lot for that, because we haven't known, like, what to do with it. So if you have some thoughts about things that would cost money, you know, um, in terms of how we get the word out, um, I want to make sure I get that into the... Okay, so I'm gonna send, because I don't think, you probably don't have it, the finance spreadsheet. Or maybe I'll just send you the budget spreadsheet, because that, because that's, I have so many tabs on this thing, because it's, you know, that summary sheet is tied into all the others. Budget spreadsheet and a PDF of Okay, so I'm gonna send those things out, and I need you guys to give me feedback, um, preferably before the meeting on the 26th of January, so that I'm not scrambling too much to revise what I'm, what I'm gonna submit, but um, I think our actual conversation will happen on the 26th. So this is, again, this is a time for us to ask for whatever we want, and um, we've pretty consistently gotten what we've needed. Um, you know, our, our line item in the budget is pretty, you know, it's peanuts, but we still need to be able to talk through the justification for what we need. Okay. Okay, now Laura, we can go back to programming.
All right, now.
So there we had, I had recruiting videographers twice. Got it. All right.
Okay. Um, yeah, so as I said before, Nick DeDonna brought the students through. So we have four students who've expressed interest. One is Brian Kim, who's already worked with us on graduation. Um, Leah Cohen is one of the others. She just texted me. I'll get back to her after the meeting. I think she had a question about the forms that she needs to get you. Um, and then the, she'll need the invoice template, but the other two, um, I haven't heard from, but again, I'm not really concerned. I'm doing, you know, the best I can, because they're students, and I know they've got, like, winter sports and AP exams and midterms and all that stuff happening. So we're working on it. Um, Amy Palmer, who's the secretary at Daniels Farm, is gonna give me her, have her son contact me. So hopefully, we can get him in the rotation. Um, I haven't heard much from Chris O'Shea, but I know that his wife, I saw him at a football game, and he said that his wife just had a baby, so he's probably still in the weeds with that. Um, but I keep him on all the stuff as well, because you never know who's available when. Um, Richie still continues to be as reliable as the sun, so thank God for that. And yeah, I mean, we're pretty much done with the Christmas rush. Um, THS Sports worked out well. We did all the home games. The, we did the St. Joe's game. That was a little challenging, I think, because we, there's no, it's, we're contingent on cell service. We had our own hotspot, but the signal kept dropping out, and, um, I don't think the cell signal's very good, and St. Joe's, I mean, you know, they, they, they gave Jeff Alterman kind of a hard time about space. So, and we weren't, I wasn't really sure who to ask. Like, we bring our own Wi-Fi hotspot, so I don't know, you know, I should have asked them if we could have gotten on their network, but now we know for two years from now.
So home games, home football games, or what other games?
Home football games. And again, it's, you know, it's, everything we've recorded is based on videographer availability.
Right.
So, you know, we have some basketball games scheduled to be recorded, um, and we're hoping to get some more. I know that we're gonna do, Jeff Alterman wants us to do the Hillcrest-Madison game again, and live broadcast those, because he'll be doing commentary. Um, so, and I also mentioned to the students too, like, if they want to pair up and have one record and the other stream, that I'm happy to show them how to use that equipment as well.
Okay.
So that's where we are on sports. Again, it's all, you know, it's all on an as-available basis.
Yep.
Um, original productions, I think I had put in the, um, in the spreadsheet, we, I just, I did a piece with, uh, Lieutenant Weir on scams. They had sent something out on the, um, town website, so I just went into the studio, or went into the station, rather, recorded him speaking a little bit, so we could air that, and that's an interstitial piece. Haven't really done a whole lot additional things. You know, we did the, um, election night show. We did the scams. I'm trying to think of, there's, I'm still working, I'm still waiting to hear from Kelly to get additional speakers on the Pima Lake piece, so that's kind of on hold. Um, I can't think of anything else off the top of my head. You know, we're still, I'm still just reaching, you know, pushing out to the, you know, different community departments within town to see what it is, you know, if they have anything they'd like us to, you know, to put a spotlight on, as we did with Next Chapter Books. But there's nothing that's coming to mind off the top of my head, but, because again, we've just been in concert.
Mode, yes. And we got a lot of other stuff done. Okay, so let's move on to technical.
Um, which is perfect now that Jeff's, uh...
To me, it looked like, when I was at the Board of Ed meeting, that that whole system was up and running. Am I incorrect?
I haven't had the Jeff.
Oh, there's Jeff.
Here I am!
Jeff?
We had Eversource shut our building down last night to do some work, and some of the systems are having a hard time coming back up this morning.
Oh, no.
Wow. So, so, um, I was at the Board of Ed, like, physically at the Board of Ed meeting on Tuesday, and it looked like, maybe I'm just a little behind, but it looked like, is the new system up?
It is not. Um, they just finished Wednesday, Thursday, yesterday morning, with all the cabling, the monitors that are mounted out in the room, um, as well as all four cameras. Right now, the, the audio processor is coming in on the 21st, is next week, and they'll put the backend together, the system.
So what are you thinking, um, in the next week? So you're thinking early January?
I hope so, because we have two board meetings there, maybe three.
Jeff, when that's up and ready, please let me know, so we can get all the, um, I'd like to get, you know, Ryan and myself and Matt and whatever videographers. I'd like to get Dennis and Arnie, because if Council Chambers uses the same system, I'd like to get as many videographers trained as possible, so we have, you know, somebody, like, if, you know, because stuff always comes up, I like to make sure that we always have somebody who's ready to record it, and if the regular, you know, regularly scheduled videographer isn't available, we've got backups.
Right, okay. It literally came to my attention too, that the superintendent would like Michelle to continue doing the meetings.
Oh, okay.
Um, but certainly you guys should be trained, especially if you're gonna get another system or as, as far as a backup, so. Right now, the, the Board of Ed is paying for those board meetings.
Okay. Well, my understanding, Kate, correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding was those were being paid out of the Board of Ed regardless of who covered them.
Yep. It's always been the case, yep.
Um, also, Jeff, do you know, when those are recorded, will we have to go into Long Hill to retrieve them, or will we be able to?
They're gonna be, as far as I know, FTP to any site that we need. It's also gonna be streamed. Um, the only thing that we're not too sure about, and I need clarification on, is that do we need more than one person back there? If we're gonna start, um, well, Bill, are you still gonna do the Zoom meetings? I guess you are, right?
Uh, yeah, that's the plan.
Okay, um, depending on the connection, to make sure you're able to stream, you're being successful streaming, as well as doing the camera shoot. Um, Laura, you, we talked about that.
Yeah, we may want to, because I find that with the football games, we livestream those, and, um, I also, you know, like, I, during the last election cycle, I had recorded a debate that I was livestreaming. It's, God forbid, there's a technical problem. It's incredibly difficult to troubleshoot while also trying to record an event. So I would recommend having a producer and a videographer there.
Okay.
And then also, because if, you know, if audio, um, I know that at Council Chambers, um, you know, different, some, well, you know from the meetings, some people speak right into the mic, some people have a naturally louder voice, some people are quieter. So if that producer can also kind of tag team as an audio engineer, I think that would probably make the most sense, and then if it gets to a point where we don't need that, you know, I'd rather have that person there just to help out than one person trying to do.
Exactly, exactly. You know, possibly that's, uh, Michelle, who does our meetings now, and one of your videographers, you know?
Yeah.
Yep.
Which I think would be great. Um, just point of reference, Kate, that stuff in the middle that you see with Michelle with the camera, that's all gonna be gone.
Yep.
That's what I was hoping. It does.
Will be better, because it'll be integrated, instead of picking off the audio.
Because I think it was seeing the monitors, and I was like, oh, those weren't here before, so that, so that was the, that's what you were talking about. Those have been installed.
Correct.
But the system isn't it. Okay.
It's not gonna, so Jeff, we're not gonna use the back of that, um, the wall behind the dais where the board is? That's not gonna be projected up there anymore?
Oh, no, it'll still be projected. It's gonna be integrated. Absolutely. There it is. The, the monitors are really for dual purpose. Uh, it's for the audience, if you want to swing them around, because they're ondulating brackets, or for Zoom people coming in. The board will be able to see them. You know, we have the, the mockup that's in the middle of the room right now. That's what we kind of, it kind of evolved over the last two years, where the board would like to hear and see, obviously, the, uh...
Yeah, the presentations.
And...
And right now, they have to turn around if they want to see what's...
Correct.
I got it. Okay. Okay, so, um...
That's, I'm anticipating training probably being the end of December. Looking at my calendar now. The system's operating, they say they only have a day left to finish. Um, so I'm, I'm guessing the week of the 26th, we'll schedule some training, and Laura, I'll, I'll touch base with you first, to make sure.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, and, and, you know, Don, Donny's good. You know, if you need extra training, he may be, I might even try to convince him to have somebody there first night we're doing. All right, and, and you know, Don, Donnie's good, you know, if you need extra training, he may be, I might even try to convention that have somebody there first night we're doing a live broadcast, just as a confidence builder.
Okay, that's, that is great news.
Yes.
Awesome. Okay, so, go ahead, Jeff, sorry.
Oh, go ahead, no, I'm good.
So Bill, Council Chambers.
Uh, yeah, we had a, we had an issue with the Council Chambers Tricaster during the last town council meeting. Yes, the, the video stopped, the, the machine crashed halfway through, froze up or whatever it was.
And wasn't it when they were, you were discussing the funding for the new Tricaster?
Yeah, I believe it was, they were talking about technology. The thing died, which is for, I think, the first time that it's had problems during a meeting like that.
I've never experienced that before.
Yeah, so unfortunately, they lost the first portion of the meeting, because the video header didn't write properly to the file. So if you go online, you'll only see after they got it back up and running.
And I couldn't even, there was something weird about the rest of that meeting. I don't know what happened, like Kate, there's when you finish recording a file, the machine, what is it, it writes the header? And I know Bill will jump in if I'm not explaining this correctly, but you have to write, the, the machine writes a header to the file, which I guess the way that I'm kind of envisioning it, it kind of like, like encapsulates the video so you can play it back. So it showed that there was, you know, there was a file that was a certain whatever, two, three gig, but I couldn't view it. So we just ended up losing that whole chunk. And then the rest of the meeting, for whatever reason, I was able to edit it in Premiere Pro, but I couldn't render it. So I had to actually put the raw footage onto the server to run, which you know, it's up there.
So I'm assuming that that, that there was support for
Yeah, I mean luckily, one of my guys was there at the meeting.
By the council, so is it, is it, are we gonna be able to move forward with?
Oh, yeah, I believe everything was funded, yeah.
Okay, and you're gonna, you can start soon to?
Yes, I mean, as long as, as soon as we receive the ARPA money, we can start spending it. So, you know, I guess that's the next steps for us would be to talk to the vendor and get a quote. And hopefully, if it's, if we're following the Board of Ed's public bid, there shouldn't be any problem with purchasing, just piggybacking on that equipment, since it's probably gonna be the same equipment.
All right, let's go, let's get ready so we can pull the trigger as soon as the money shows up. Do, do we have any idea how long that? I, I know you probably don't know, it's the government, okay? But do we have any idea when funds will show up?
Um, I think, I think the town council's talking about that. Soon, I think right then. Everything was approved, I believe, at the last meeting, and maybe the Board of Finance has the next crack at, I'm not sure what the what the pattern would be, but hopefully soon those money will be allocated and then we'll be able to spend it. But that doesn't prevent us from starting the process of getting the quotes and doing all that first.
The good news is the products are becoming more readily available, so that's a good thing.
All right, so we should get that quote process started and then, Bill, you should let me know if in the next step, and, and I should have offered this before, if you need me or anybody else on the commission to come advocate for this to, you know, would have been Town Council, but now if it's Board of Finance, you know, I'm happy to do that and I'm sure there's others that would join me to help make the case. So you just gotta tell me if you think that'll, that'll help.
I think we're okay with support.
Awesome, that's great news. Oh my God, can you imagine when we have both new systems?
We don't have to drive to Town Hall to like wait for probate to download the file.
Wow, awesome. It only took however many years, but perseverance pays off, right? Okay, anything else technical we need to be talking about?
Um, just based on Lara's comment about the coverage at St. Joe's. We, you could buy, there's something called a microwave transmitter.
Boy, that's old technology, man.
It, it's, uh, it still works though.
So that's amazing.
You, you, you'd buy, you have two halves to it. One half you put in the building, so in the school or whatever, and you put it close to a window. And the other device you put wherever your exit point needs to be, and then they'll transmit 100 megabits per second over three miles. So, um, it's, it's a problem with live, you know, public events that um, so cell service is more or less out of the question because there are too many cell phones there. So it, I've had situations where I would go there the day before and check the bandwidth and all this stuff and it looked really good. And then, you know, a thousand people show up and there's no signal or there's no bandwidth whatsoever. So, uh, this microwave thing, um, I, I can send you a link to it later on. It's 250 bucks, something like that. And it's plug and play, literally.
Well, we could buy that now.
Okay. If we think we need something like that, then I suggest.
I mean, now that you sort of framed up the, the cell service issue, it makes perfect sense. And, you know, we, we would typically go check out a site and say, oh, it's all good. And then forgetting that when 500 people show up, you, there's no bandwidth left, so. Um, and I love the idea of using old tried and true technology to get around a, a modern problem.
It works. And the, um, I used it at the, um, nine, the 9/11 memorial ride down at Sherwood Island, where there, you know, 3,000 bikers. Um, and usually if you can get, because it's Fred Garrity, you can get access to police stations and firehouses anywhere. So you put a device there within line of sight. Some of them will go 10 miles. So it's really, it's a nice thing to have, especially because we do a lot of outside or outdoor work with the graduations and sports events.
Yeah, fortunately, yeah, fortunately at Trumbull High, we have access to the athletics, the athletics network, so we, but again, you just don't know, so it would always
So I'd, I'd say, Jens, if you can get Laura and Ryan that information and you guys can figure it out, do we, you know, I would say if it's, you know, obviously it's portable.
Yeah.
Then it just goes, I mean, we could still have the same problem at Trumbull High, right?
Potentially, yeah, because we're having issues on the athletics network where, you know, we just kept getting bounced off.
So this is a real solution, you know? I would say we, we get one and we have, we have money in the budget that we're not spending for other stuff, so.
It's not like a camera in terms of the spend.
Right.
I'll, I'll send the, I'll send the details to, to Ryan and Laura, or whoever. I'll send it to the list. You can throw it out if you don't want.
Well, Laura and Ryan need to, uh, figure it out. And then, you know, you just gotta do the paperwork and I'll figure out what line item to take it out of.
Laura, how about the athletics? Have you had any issues with that? I talked to Jeff Altman yesterday and he seemed to think everything settled in and
Right, I've been bringing the Wi-Fi hotspot with us to the home games, because athletics sometimes got a little unstable, so I could use the hotspot at the stadium. So we had, had issues there. It was just at St. Joe's, because again, the stadium is, you know, like it, it basically, it backs up onto somebody's backyard. So, and then there's like a lot of trees behind it, so it's not like at Trumbull High where you have, you know, a larger open space, you know what I mean? Where it's kind of not. And, um, I, I don't, you know, again, I don't know if it's just, I don't know, I'd have to just, you know, develop a better relationship with St. Joe's and just keep trying.
Right, right. We, we ended up putting in a new access point on the, on Eagles Nest, on the press box.
And that, I think that definitely helps, because again, the season seems to be, you know, once that was changed, once the password had changed, it tends there were, we weren't having the issues we were having before.
Well, the password did get compromised.
Yeah. Not surprised.
And I'm surprised. It took, it took a couple of years, but that's okay. We changed that on the fly, so it's not
Yeah, once that changed, that, that was, you know, that all worked well. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so any other technical issues we need to discuss? Old or new? The list is getting shorter. I was looking at agendas from like two or three years ago and we would have like 10 things on this list. So it's nice that we're literally down to a couple. Okay, um, marketing, PR. We were talking about getting more active on KTR and Trumbull Talks. And we talked about a mobile app. That we're gonna send out.
Yeah, I have posted that on Facebook. I need to, again, I, I had dropped the ball on that. I will post that. I'll post the video about smartphones and the app. Sorry, I'm making a note for myself, so I don't forget to do this. So I can post the help, the link, the YouTube link to the help video over there. And I just, I sat down, I was just trying to think of, because again, I post things as they come, but I feel like, you know, for social media, once concerts are done, I wanna kind of spend break and the slow season, like thinking about, um, you know, what kind of routine, because it'll just be easier, like on, like I used to send out on Wednesdays, I used to email a distribution list, the weekly schedule. So it's like, oh, okay, on Wednesdays I can post a link to, you know, hey, wanna know what's on TCTV this week? Here's a link to the schedule and that becomes the Wednesday post. So I just need to sort of think through um, what kinds of information need to go out. You know, because in the meantime, I was just kind of picking things up from the town website, or if TCTV had things to promote. But that's where, that's where I'm at with the social media.
Amy, does that sound like it makes sense?
It makes sense. I think it's gonna be, it'll be helpful for us to sit down at some point and maybe go a little bit more in-depth into everything. Um, I would just caution a little bit over reposting too much of other people's stuff in particular, while you're not particularly active, because it kind of reminds people that you have the account, but you're not adding anything new, so people might start dropping off, because they're like, oh, I already followed this other account, I'm just getting the same thing twice. Um, so even though you're trying to look active, it might be more take away. So I would say maybe pull back until you have a solid schedule of new content that you could be putting out there.
Right, and I figure even if it's just a new schedule on Wednesday, it's better than nothing.
Yep.
So maybe, maybe Laura, you and Amy can coordinate, you know, a half an hour call just to talk more about that posting strategy. So that, again, the more formulaic you can make it, and it, you know, you say, okay, on Wednesdays, I'm always gonna post the schedule. On Friday, I'll look to see if I have anything that's topical for the weekend, or I don't know, whatever. But I just think, I think her point of view is gonna help us and again, help make it easier for you to
That schedule.
Yeah, yeah. With, without doing what, what she said, you know, the reposting of other people's stuff. Yeah, I, I do get annoyed when I get it from four different places. Okay, anything else? Uh, we have talked about the website. I, I think it's, you know, working and seems to be, I mean, I don't, I don't know if anybody's, you know, up, up for like a redesign or anything. Or do we just continue with what we got and hone, you know, the other aspects of our operation?
I can't say that I've opened it up on my phone, but that'd be my only concern of saying that you might need a new approaches if it's not format, formatted well for mobile devices, because that definitely should be the priority.
So I think that's what we're gonna have to see then, Laura, is how.
Talking muted. I don't think it's ever been formatted for mobile.
I mean, yeah, I'd recommend looking at that.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so let's do that and maybe at the next meeting be able to say, okay, it looks okay, or no, we need to do some reformatting and then how are we gonna do that?
Yeah, it's actually, I, I pulled it up right now. Um, there's not a ton of stuff on the homepage, so fortunately it's not. You know, and I think the menu is fairly straightforward, but I'll have to drill down a little more page by page.
Okay. Okay, Trumbull High connection. I think we, we had talked about Amy and Todd.
Yes, we, we did. I did not have a chance to connect with him yet, but I do know who he is. We've ran into people multiple times, uh, into each other multiple times, but I wasn't making the connection initially. So I'll reach out probably post holidays, but before our next meeting.
Okay, great. And, and, you know, Laura can help with that connection if, if necessary. Okay, uh, anything else we need to talk about that's not on the agenda? Um, I've got our new 2023 meeting dates at the bottom of the agenda, so our next meeting is January 26th. And as I said at the beginning of the meeting, um, we've got our, I've got our bud, my budget meeting with the first selectmen on February 3rd. So the plan would be to have a budget ready for you guys to look like, look at on the 26th and approve for submission. So we just need to spend the next couple of weeks, if you've got ideas or things that you wanna spend money on, you gotta send them over to me, um, so I can make sure that we ask for enough money. But I have a really good feeling that geez, but maybe by, I don't know, Bill, June, we could have we could have a new system in the Council Chambers and the Board of Ed.
Let's hope, right?
Yeah, that would be, that would be incredible.
When it rains, it pours.
And then it's really, I think, about making sure that everybody in town knows the full range of options they have to access the meetings and programming. Because now we, now we'll have, you know, like a full plate of options. And, and I'm not sure that it is well-known or well-understood what, how people can, can access us, which is a great position to be in, right? And then maybe Jim Lang will come back and ask us to do a survey.
Uh, he wouldn't do that, never.
Okay, anybody have anything else?
Uh, the only other thing I have is just more of a question for Jeff and then for Bill when we get those Tricasters coming. It's really more of just something we need to address as we get to it is, um, how, like, this is more on the technical end, but I just wanna make sure that we have a plan in place for like when meetings go into executive session, rather than just go to black. So I just wanna kind of put that out there that we need to think about. You know, how we're gonna do that. And I think that's more specific to Town Hall, because I don't think Board of Ed goes into executive session during their meetings very often.
No, typically it's before the meeting.
Right.
So at the, one other technical question, we have continued to call it the Tricaster system, even though that's not what it is. So maybe we could come up with whatever the new name is going to be for either a generic name that describes the functionality, or if, if Tricaster was actually the brand name, whatever we're gonna call this now. So, um, we stop calling it Tricaster when it's, we don't have Tricasters.
What do you think, Jens? DNR keeps calling it, calling it a video distribution system.
That sounds good.
That sounds good.
BDS, okay.
One more acronym for the alphabet soup.
Video Distribution, that, that makes much more sense to me.
Brian, congratulations.
Yeah.
Congratulations, going to Fairfield, yeah.
Thank you.
Great, good for you.
It's, uh, it's been keeping me busy.
Yeah, I'll bet.
We're gonna wanna see your report card, so. No, I'm kidding, kidding. I know you're not going to class. Um, okay, anything else?
Belated happy birthday, Jens.
Oh, thank you. Big deal. I'm a little tired this morning, so. Well, you know, I mean, nobody's getting any younger, so it's, it's, I mean, it's a greater event every year, right? It's, uh, statistically.
Yes.
Right, right.
Well, I had a dinner last night in New Canaan and like it, I, all of a sudden it was 9:30 and I'm like, oh my God.
Oh, yeah.
We have to go home. And there's a whole bunch of younger people in the group and they're like, my God, what's the matter with her? I'm like, no, I, I'm usually in, in bed reading my social media right now, so I appreciate.
You don't look your age. That's why. They think you're younger.
Certainly not, not clean, good clean living. Okay, everybody, thank you so much. Have a great holiday. I will send the finance information and the PDF of the goals out to you guys. And, you know, look forward to any feedback that you have for us. All right?
Thank you.
Happy holidays, everybody.
Holidays.